I call to order the February 25th, 2019 Regular Business Meeting of the Waynesboro City Council. If you wouldn't mind, please, the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would remind folks that would like to speak this evening on either of the subjects, public hearings or citizen comment period, we've got some sign up sheets in the back and would be glad if you could complete those. First up on the agenda is the agenda. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda that we'd like to entertain this evening?
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Blue Ridge Community College wants to give us an update, so if we could add that as a 3A on our agenda.
Wonderful. Sir, a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Number two on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Number three are matters from council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I'd like to, I've got two things, Mr. Mayor. First, I don't know how I missed this, but back in 2018, Captain Walker, I mean, yeah, Captain Kelly Walker with Waynesboro Police Department was given an award that kinda slipped by me and I didn't know. He received a Virginia Crisis Intervention Team Award. He was the Team Leader of the Year. So, I think that's important to recognize, Captain Walker, for his achievement there. That's a statewide award. And then just this past weekend, our Director of Emergency Management, Gary Kreiser, was appointed to the Governor's 911 Committee. So, that's two big awards for our public safety people and I think they should be recognized for that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for sharing that.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to announce again my monthly citizens meeting. The first Tuesday of the month, 9:00 a.m., typically meet over here at the French Press. Just an open forum. Come on down and we'll talk about what's on your mind, see what discussions we can have. They've been involved and entertaining at times, so hopefully we'll see some folks out.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. What else? Great. Well, with that, we will go to item 3A, which is an update from Blue Ridge Community College. Dr. Downey, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, and thank you for accommodating my schedule tonight. I really appreciate it. I come on an annual basis just to thank you for your ongoing support of Blue Ridge Community College and let you know that we couldn't do what we do at the college without your help and support. One of the most important jobs you have is to appoint representatives of the city of Waynesboro to our local advisory board, and you appointed two of the best. Joyce Coleman and John Matherly are here with me tonight and really appreciate their support on an ongoing basis. I want to also thank Mike Hamp and the city staff who support the college whenever Blue Ridge Community College is in need of help. The college transforms the lives of the students and the community we serve, and we couldn't do it without you. I provided you with packets of information that you can review at your leisure. It includes our annual report and our fact sheet. We continue to serve a significant number of Waynesboro citizens and businesses. Last fall, of the 4,129 students we served in credit programs, 267 were from the city of Waynesboro, about 6.5% of all of our students who attended Blue Ridge last fall. We also served another 70 Augusta County or Waynesboro City residents this fall in non-credit workforce training and personal enrichment courses. And most significantly, almost 20% of the Waynesboro High School graduating class enrolled in Blue Ridge Community College last fall. We want all of those numbers to increase, and that's one of the reasons we're so excited about the upcoming opening of the Waynesboro outpost, which I'll talk about more in just a minute. Some of the updates I wanted to make sure you're aware of. We opened our new parking deck over the summer, which is making parking on campus easier. We're also anticipating the opening of a brand-new bioscience building in the fall that will house our nursing program, as well as our brand-new paramedic EMT program that I think will help the city, and also bio-manufacturing labs, which will help the manufacturing sector in the region. It's an important facility for regional economic development, and many of the local manufacturers need qualified technicians now with more science-oriented skills. Speaking of economic development, I appreciate working closely with Greg Hitchen, who works hard to promote economic development in the region. I am the immediate past Chair of the Shenandoah Valley Partnership, and that position gave me the opportunity to interact regularly with Greg on regional efforts. Our collective efforts are making a difference. Colliers International just listed the Shenandoah Valley as one of the top 10 emerging industrial markets in the country, and it's the work that you do to support workforce development efforts and the wonderful quality of living that enhances our standing nationally. We continue to work well with site selectors through the Shenandoah Valley Partnership and also company decision-makers to address critical economic development needs in our own region. Speaking of workforce development, we continue to work hard to address the workforce needs of local employers. Our credit and non-credit training programs provide local youth and adults with tremendous life-changing career options. For every job in the future that will require a master's degree or higher, there will be two jobs that require a baccalaureate, but seven jobs that will require some form of pro-secondary training or an associate's degree. Blue Ridge is really pleased to be working so hard to fill those skills gaps. In addition to all of our credit programs that lead to great careers, we have a non-credit workforce certification program that leads directly to employment. The Commonwealth's Fast Forward Program allows students to pay only 1/3 of the cost of getting a certification, while the state pays the other 2/3 in high-demand careers like welding, truck driving, and healthcare. The General Assembly just increased funding for Fast Forward, so I'm hopeful to be able to provide even more Waynesboro citizens with opportunities to improve their lives through this quick-start program. In conclusion, let me thank you again for all of your support, especially in regard to the online outpost and our work together on the Go-Virginia Cyber Security Grant. As you know, the grand opening of the online outpost will be Wednesday, March 13th, at 2:00 p.m., and I hope all of you can make that. It's going to be an exciting day. And Go-Virginia, well, the Waynesboro outpost is serving the need by providing high-speed broadband to the region for your hard-working residents. Citizens will be able to have greater access to our distance-learning courses and be able to take entire distance-learning programs right here in Waynesboro. And also, they'll have more access to signing up for courses and not have to drive all the way up to Weers Cave to do that. The Go-Virginia aspect of the Cyber Security Grant will provide Waynesboro residents to access highly sought-after career skill sets. We enjoy a tremendous response from this grant already and grateful for the supportive role that you all played in bringing the project to our region. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the college or any of those particular programs I mentioned.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Downey?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I really appreciate it.
I would just say it's been, what a whirlwind the last couple of years it's been. And I know I am deeply appreciative of the college's support and your leadership. We are so excited to get that online outpost open, get the word out, get registration up, push that 6.5% of enrollment up to around eight or nine, maybe even higher.
Be great.
And certainly look forward to doing all that we can to further the mission of empowering our residents and those in the region. So, appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Great. With that, we'll go to number four, which is Public Hearing Version 2.0 of the Draft Transportation Plan. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. Mr. Judee is going to provide a very fresher refresher on this item, and then we'll open the public hearing. A reminder, the ordinance was introduced at the previous meeting, on the 28th, so tonight we'll need a second. Any discussion that may need to occur, and then a vote to adopt.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I did a longer presentation on the transportation plan before where I went to some of the projects. I'm just going to go back over the overall structure of it and quickly recap. Since that public hearing, we've uploaded, hopefully, a higher-quality version of it onto the website and with a link so that folks can access it more easily. Again, why did we produce a transportation plan? The main reason is that we're required by state code and that we have to have a transportation plan in order to get state and federal transportation grants, and so all of our projects need to be in this plan. But also because it is good for us. It establishes a direction for our improvements in the city. Most transportation projects are extremely expensive, and they stretch beyond the tenure of any individual elected official and even beyond the tenure of many staff members. And so it's important that they be put in writing and that there be a clear direction that doesn't just change from person to person. Our approach, this was primarily a consolidation of existing plans and projects. We had a lot of stuff floating around, and so this will put it all into one place where it can be easily accessed. You know what's in the plan, what projects we mean to do. We did engage in a public outreach program that involved an interactive online map and open house and planning commission work sessions to bring in public input. For the most part, it was, you know, a lot of stuff that was already kind of floating around. And again, this is the second public hearing for it. Just to reiterate, there were a number of transportation priorities that were in the 2018 Comprehensive Plan that we've called out at the beginning of the transportation plan. So, these are the things, everything in the transportation plan is important to the long-term viability of the city and to our transportation network. But these were things that the comp plan called out as specifically important to our competitiveness and our quality of life. Those included expanding the South River Greenway Trail, eventually connecting a trail to the Crozay Tunnel, redeveloping our aging commercial corridors to a higher aesthetic standard, making a better front door for our city, monitoring the funding gaps in VDOT maintenance money, and adopting and implementing a sidewalk plan. So, we've divided the transportation plan into five sections. The road network, first of all, consolidates all the projects that are currently being discussed. I, before, went over a number of what those were going to look like, from access management projects to potentially new road connections that would need to be built in the future as subdivisions expanded. We looked at sidewalk plans, establishing, I'm sorry, this is, yeah, a map that's available. It's probably that, if you want to just flip to one page and get a picture of what's in the road network section, this is the one to go to. There was a sidewalk section. Again, one of the priorities from the Comprehensive Plan was establishing a sidewalk plan. And so the sidewalk section will serve as that sidewalk plan, give us priorities as funds become available, as we either contract out work or are able to hire a sidewalk crew where we should work first. And this is a look at what that plan looks like, focusing mostly on the major corridors that don't have good alternative access, less on streets that may be safe to walk on at the moment, but especially in some of the spots that are very difficult to walk. For the bicycle section, it's fairly slim because we have a very robust bike plan already, and so we've referenced and sort of reaffirmed that plan, and that's a large number of the items in that plan have been implemented already. And then for the Greenway section, reaffirms the existing Greenway master plan, which has been in place since 2001, and identifies several sections of it as sort of the next priorities for expansion. So, currently, we have existing Greenway running along the South River from Port Republic neighborhood all the way down to Low Springs. Then we have sections of Greenway built as part of subdivisions up in Annemaria Estates, Claybrook, and Evershire. We've called out as the, we have projects currently pending on the north end of that, heading to North Park, Phase 2B, and then on the south end, heading to Regview Park, what's known as Phase 3. Then we've identified Phase 4 going to Basic Park as probably the low-hanging fruit after this. And then we also have the Greenway along the new Southern Connector that will be under construction within a couple of years, along with the Southern Connector. And then we also have the East Main Greenway, which we believe will be funded through Smart Scale. And then finally, transit. In this section, we just talked about the city's support for the Bright Bus Service and ways that that can be improved in the future. And we're already working towards that this year in our budget by trying to identify small-line items for dealing with things like bus shelters and bus stop signs. So, that is the transportation plan. Again, overarching summary is that we're compiling all existing initiatives into one easily-accessible document. This will make it easier for council or planning commission to propose changes. If you want to see something get built and it's not really, you know, you want to know how does something happen in the city, the first step is to add it to the transportation plan. As Mr. Shaw likes to say, we don't do everything in the plan, but everything that happens is in the plan. So, the first step is to get it in the plan. And then, over time, we'll prioritize things in the plan as part of our CIP and make them happen. Anyway, any questions that you all have come up with over the last couple of weeks as you've looked at the plan?
Does anybody have any?
I've got one for you. So, we had chatted a little bit after the meeting about Hopeman Parkway from essentially 254 all the way to the river. And when you look at undeveloped but platted parcels or subdivided parcels and rezoned property, that's really where we have the largest potential for residential growth. And residential growth generates the greatest number of trips. But what was absent in there was any recommendation for a widening. Or, and what I give it that isn't that, well, that's a city-initiated project. But should development come online, our ability to acquire or have dedicated the right-of-way to facilitate a future widening would be upended because we don't have it in the Conference of Plan. And so, just kind of want to get your thoughts on whether or not we should maybe consider, you know, a four-lane divided typical section, 84 feet of right-of-way as sort of a context.
I mean, if that's the direction that you'd like to go in, I think we can explore that. Personally, in sitting down with our city engineer, I don't feel that the traffic projection's up there. And we are experiencing a lot of development, but the amount of traffic that development generates, I don't think will create a congestion problem in that area for a long, long time. So, I, to my mind, it's not worth working towards at the moment, especially since, I would hope that we're moving away from widening as a solution and towards having a more disconnected network that distributes traffic better. And I think the widening projects tend to create more of a barrier for pedestrians and that type of thing. And there's ways around that, but...
Yeah, but it's not a residential street. I mean, it's...
No, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah. Because it also might be an accelerated way to deliver a shared-use path versus, you know... And again, it's a 20-, 30-year plan.
Yeah.
So, you know, will it develop 20 and 30 years from now?
Yeah.
Yeah, not that that will be, you know, the number-one priority for...
Well, once the plan is passed, or even now, you can always propose an amendment to the transportation plan. Stick things on there, but, yeah, but personally, I didn't think that that was warranted.
Mr. Mayor, I might add, and I don't want to misspeak, but I'm under the impression that there's a significant amount of undeveloped right-of-way along Hopeman Parkway that when it was originally conceived and was built as a VDOT project, it was a limited-access highway, that there were active industries on, of course, along Hopeman Parkway at the eastern end. And so, there was, as I recall, and we can certainly double-check this, that there's sufficient right-of-way for a four-lane highway along the stretch that you've just mentioned.
Okay. Yeah, and the classic VDOT way was undivided, which, of course, that's not the way it would roll now, would be an undivided, or it would be a divided facility, rather.
Sure. Yeah, we would want to do an undivided one.
I still have to settle on tonight, but if, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just maybe even checking the existing right-of-way and if it sort of passes the sniff test. Because you're right, you know, this is not going to be something I think happens overnight. But, you know, for every 100 foot of 200 feet of frontage that you don't get, that's awfully expensive when you really need it, and so if there's a...
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah.
As you mentioned, we would hope, if we ever do go to four lanes anywhere, to be moving towards divided highways with better access management and not undivided.
Yeah, and more conducive to pedestrian and multimodal activity, yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So, with that, I will open up the public hearing. Do we have anybody who's a...
We do not.
All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. Is there, we've already had the motion to adopt the ordinance made at our January 28th meeting. Is there any additional discussion or comment? Everybody's cool with just having them come back with some additional. Okay, so with that, we have a motion. Do we have a, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Great, thank you. Who made the original motion? Do we know? Might have been.
I can't make the motion.
Well, I just want to make sure. Okay, great. So, we have a motion, probably second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Now, thanks to Luke and our planning commission and for all the hard work, Sonny, to put this together. So, we really appreciate it. All right. Number five is to consider authorizing an open alcohol on public property and a partial closure of Main Street, all in association with the Wayne Theater Grand Gala event on Friday, May 17th. Mr. Hamp?
Pardon me, sir. The event setup, or the event begins at 5:00 o'clock, and the closure is requested from 5:00 p.m. until 1:00 a.m. on that Friday, as specified, May 17th. And in terms of the closure, a significant portion of this, and it is a significant fundraiser for the theater, will occur on the parking lot adjacent to what was formerly known as the Grand Home Furnishings Building, previously G&amp;W Motorworks, and presently a location of University of Science and Philosophy. Anyway, that is a private lot, so a portion of the event will occur there. And the theater requests the road closure to facilitate attendees being able to move from the tented area into the theater area with their beverages and flow back and forth through the course of the evening. So, that's why the road closure and the authorization for alcohol exists. We will construct a theater, if the council approves the application, is that their patrons should consume alcohol either in the theater or in the tented area, and that this authorization is simply to cross the street between the two venues and not to loiter and enjoy social time in the street, so to speak. Any questions? I'm happy to ask, answer. Excuse me.
Any questions, Mr. Hamp?
The only thing that I would offer is just more of a question about the barricading that happens if you're traveling east on Main Street, West Main, and where that barricades are. I'm increasingly concerned, and not just myself, but for numerous patrons of the Wayne, express concerns about folks traveling at pretty great speeds, both east and west on Main Street, and particularly if it's, you know, an evening event, and the barricades. And I just, that really may be a question, Mr. Hamp, more of sort of a knowledge and observation, and I think increasing concern of folks that are not following the speed limit and are kind of rushing it over that hill. It's pretty frightening as folks are trying to enter sometimes. And I think they actually had an event there, an incident where someone was struck by a vehicle in the last year or so, I think. I think every year or something.
I'm not familiar with a vehicle strike by a patron, but your point is a good one. And I would say that generally speaking, as our downtown has fortunately become more active and you have more restaurants and venues that are open in the evening, bringing recommendations to close Main Street is not as easy, or as, shall we say, without due consideration as it once was. And so, I think, I'm recalling a time when we were Soapbox Derby, Art Show, and Christmas Parade, and that was about it. And increasingly, we're accommodating events and sort of limited closures such as this that does, as you point out, raise the concern about when you mix pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic in a downtown vibrant area. So, the chief is here. I'm sure he's heard these comments. We'll take note and make sure that we're doing all that we can to make that safe. I do appreciate that the theater lends some significant volunteer effort. We've, I think they've purchased some additional signage. We've put up some additional signage to alert folks to crosswalks, and we have to rely on adults and drivers to be responsible. So, we do our best to strike an effective balance.
Thank you. So, is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number six is to consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 1, Section 14, Assessment of Electronic Summon System of the Code of the City of Waynesboro, Virginia. Mr. Hamp?
So, council may recall that in our current budget, there are funds appropriated for our police department to install what is known generally as an E or electronic summons system in which officers can issue summons and tickets in the field more easily. So, there's computer, printer, et cetera. That work is occurring in the field. Our department purchased that equipment and has implemented it in anticipation of a mandate to do so from the Commonwealth. So, we're a little bit ahead of the game. At the time of implementation, I was not aware of this provision of the Code of Virginia that allows localities to assess a fee associated with the summons issued through the system to facilitate the repair, maintenance, and replacement, eventual replacement of these systems, thereby reducing the burden on the general fund of the locality to keep our department equipped in this fashion. And so, it would be my recommendation that the council adopt the fee at $5 per ticket on eligible transactions to support this technology in the department.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
Question about sort of what volume we're talking about there?
It's a good question and one that the chief and I discussed. We, I think, issue between 1,500 and 2,000 tickets in a year. We expect that this would generate, therefore, perhaps as much as $10,000, which is probably a clip more significant than we would need to sustain. But the chief and I talked about better to perhaps start at this point and reduce the fine, ensuring that we have adequate resource to maintain the system. And I think we'll keep an eye on it. Again, our system is new, so I think what would be a recommended course of action is to establish the fee, build a reserve, and then come back with a report to council about our progress, and then reduce the fee at that point if it becomes apparent that we're able to do that. I do, I know there may be some sensitivity to starting at that point and working back, but I'm also very sensitive, especially given recent budget talks, about the burden that our general fund carries and the ability to transfer a fee to those individuals that are either enjoying, isn't the right word in this case, but participating in a system's use as opposed to more broadly across the general fund and residents.
Great, thank you. All right. I said, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance? All right, Hamp said, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Great, thank you. This ordinance and others will be considered at our March 11 regular council meeting. Item 6B is to consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 3, Precious Metal Dealers, Sections 22-122 and 22-124 of the Code of the City of Waynesboro. Mr. Hamp.
So ladies and gentlemen, the city code requires that the owner of a business verify the identity of any person selling precious metals or gems with a form of government-issued picture ID, and further, the business owner is required to make a copy of the identification used to verify the seller's identity for inclusion as part of the sales record. The U.S. Code, however, prohibits the duplication of a military identification, and in order to bring our city code into conformity with the Code of Virginia and to compliance with the U.S. Code, it's necessary to adopt and amend our code, new language, adopt new language amending our code that excludes military identification as a acceptable form of identification in these transactions. Presently, military IDs are specifically mentioned in the code, and we need to remove that because it's in conflict with the U.S. Code. This is a housekeeping matter.
Any questions, Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. Number seven, Communication Correspondence. Mr. Hamp.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Number eight is the Citizen Comment Period.
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Jennifer Lewis. Ms. Lewis, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, and then we've got the little stoplight here.
Sure. Jennifer Lewis, 113 Iris Drive in Waynesboro. I just wanted to come and share my concerns about the homeless population in Waynesboro. So my husband and I walk the Greenway every Saturday and Sunday morning, and we witness the dropping off of some homeless folks by the Warm Shelter, which I very much support, and I love the work that they do. But when you witness this happen and you see people get unloaded from this van with all their belongings on their back, and then they just scatter throughout the city, makes me just kind of wonder why we don't have a day program or a day shelter that our homeless folks can go to, someplace that they can access internet so they can look for jobs or housing, and apply for other services in our, in our city. So that's just what I wanted to share today, and if you have not witnessed this, please check it out. It happens about 7:00 every morning, and it's something that really hits at your heart when you see these people who literally take all their stuff, and we've watched people just climb under a bush and go back to bed. So I do think that we need to address something about where our homeless folks can go during the day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm, we're going to struggle with this a little bit. Chris Rennie?
Okay.
Hi.
Chris, if you mind stating your name and address for the record.
Yeah, it's Chris Rennie, 201 Lee Drive, Waynesboro, Virginia, 2290. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, never done this before. So I'd like to make a comment about the signs discouraging drivers from donating to people in the medians. They frame the issue of panhandling in a way that I find deeply problematic. By encouraging drivers to ignore panhandlers, the city is perpetuating harmful myths about poor and often homeless people who have to resort to begging to make ends meet. For instance, that they are actually better off from, than many of us. Okay, so the myth that they're better off than many of us and are simply taking advantage of our charitable nature. This causes people to misdirect their anger from a system that allows people to fall into destitution to the poor themselves. When government, when the government shutdown happened earlier this year, we found that many people were just one or two paychecks away from being evicted. Young people died from rationing insulin. Our profit-obsessed culture has allowed human necessities such as housing and healthcare to be commodified so that those who own property or patents can profit at the expense of everyday people. People with extra income buy houses that sit empty for years because it's considered a good investment, while many can't afford to put a down payment on a house because gentrification has driven up housing prices. Elderly folks must often sell their homes when they are placed in nursing homes to pay for the service of long-term care. Wages haven't kept pace with the cost of living, so people spend half their incomes on rent and have no way to save or even afford quality food or clothes. It's no wonder people feel like they can make more money just asking for it on the street. I don't have an answer for what Waynesboro should do to eliminate poverty, but I humbly suggest that we keep things in perspective and don't allow people in need to be swept under the rug. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, awesome. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Great, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
We are adjourned, thank you.